I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call our meeting to order. Betsy, will you call the roll, please?
I know that all board members are in attendance.
Okay, thank you. On to item four. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented in your board packet tonight. Thank you, John. In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have two items from closed session tonight for action items. Need a motion to approve the closed session minutes for January 24th, 2013. January 28th, 2013 is present in your board packet tonight.
So move.
Thank you, Alan. In a second, please.
I second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Carter.
Yes.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Next item we have is communications. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board on any agenda topic tonight? Yes, sir?
I received it.
Need you to come up to the podium up here, please, and state your name, please, for the record. And we try and keep this to five minutes for any comments to the board. Thank you.
My name's Rob Scott. I live in Fox Creek subdivision. I received a letter March 6th indicating, at least to the first of my knowledge, proposed change for Fox Creek students, including my child, being shifted from schools. She's attended that school now, which will be, it'll be one year. She's in kindergarten with Ms. Coon. She loves that school. I have no knowledge regarding the process, how this was gone about, whether there was opportunity for any input, what the rationale is for it, what the numbers are for it. We've been told absolutely nothing. In fact, all the research that I could find, Fox Creek was never mentioned as being one of the ones that was potentially up for change. I know no solicitation of input from at least any citizens related to it. I may be mistaken. I didn't have a lot of time to research it. I'm opposed to it for multiple reasons, but one of them being that I don't understand the necessity at this point. I'm sure there's some sort of necessity, but I don't know the numbers. I don't know any information. I don't know the process. I don't know how it was done. I don't know anything other than you want to move my child after a year of school to somewhere else. It has a different start time. It has different teachers. It's a different building. It's a different friend. She's being moved from everything she knows. I would frankly love to have information regarding how this was done, what the concerns are. I understand the nebulous concept of overcrowding. I understand you predicting certain growth in growth areas. I don't know what's fact or fiction based on any of the rumors that people have been spreading in the last four or five days. My understanding is that just Fox Creek is one of the ones that's being targeted for being moved. I understand before that there was talk about moving Lake Point and Crowesmo, which frankly, to me, without any additional knowledge, makes more sense considering I'm about two minutes from my school and they're all the way over on the other side. But again, I don't know anything. We've got no information, absolutely nothing. And beyond how I think that it's going to impact my daughter, that is probably one of the most upsetting things to me. Absolutely nothing. You get a letter, "Hey, by the way, we're going to move your kid. A certain amount of confidence has been placed in this board. This community voted to give you $35 million to make changes, money that we're going to pay. I already paid $5,000 in property taxes. Now, I understand it's not going to go up, but it's going to extend the necessity for that. $35 million to spend as you will, and we don't get the courtesy of being involved in this process. No information, no two-way street, nothing. I don't know when your deadline is, and I don't know what your timeframe is, but I would urge you not to take any immediate action until at least people can be informed and have an opportunity to come and address this. I want to understand the process. I want to understand why this is being done, but most importantly, I want to understand why it's being done and the way that it's being done. Who is my Fox Creek representative? I apologize. I don't even know. I looked on the district thing, trying to find what districts. Who covers Fox Creek?
You don't necessarily have a direct representative for Fox Creek. We represent the entire district.
They're not, it's not broken up?
We're not.
It's broken up, not that way. It's broken up by who can be seated, but not who you represent in the district.
You vote, you voted at large.
Yeah.
Okay. I can't even ask the appropriate questions because I have no basis of information. I would love to be able to articulate more specific concerns, but at this point, they're general. You know, I'm concerned about the transition for my daughter, not just about going to the new school, not knowing anybody, knowing very few people, but additionally, the time. We're talking about an hour time difference now. Instead of being at school approximately 10:00 to 8:20, now we're talking about 7:30. It may not seem like a big deal to some people, but if you have to make arrangements for childcare, now my child's looking at being in after-school care for two and a half hours instead, instead of an hour to 45 minutes. Now, we're talking about having to get the child up earlier. You know, you're talking about 6:15, 6:30 to get her to school by 7:30. You know, it's a huge deal for us, not just my concerns about what's going to happen, but again, how it was done, how we came up with this. I mean, I would love to, I would love to have the background information, how this decision, you know, or this suggestion or proposal, or however you couch it in terms here, was come to. I've not spoken to anybody who has any more information than I do in the subdivision. I've imposed to it, absent any additional knowledge. I don't have any, you know, I don't have any basis other than a personal basis for being opposed to it. I'm biased. I would absolutely guarantee you that I'm biased. I like Mrs. Coon. I liked where my school is. My daughter likes her teachers. She likes the environment. She likes her principal. We don't want to move. And absent knowing why it was done, how it was done, and how it was come to, I don't support it for what it's worth.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Is this, it is on an agenda topic tonight?
Um, it is about Fox Creek.
Okay.
Address the board.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Jennifer Monsour is my name, and we are Fox Creek residents. I have three children, eighth grade, third grade, first grade. We were affected with the new school opening and made the transition of two of our three children to the new school, which was a difficult transition, as Mr. Scott was mentioning, but we got through it and it's fine. Change is inevitable. Now, we're looking at going back to Chatham Elementary, so my third grader will finish fourth grade at Chatham Elementary, which I can go with that. I'm okay. I know a lot of the administrators and the teachers, and I know what a wonderful community we have. However, as a parent and as a resident, extremely disheartened to see that you would divide our subdivision. It's not okay. We rely on our neighbors. We need to know the people in our neighborhood. We have working parents, childcare. We need that backup. We need that support. And I know people five blocks away who are helping me out with after-school, and I know them based on the reason that our kids were in school together, because it is one neighborhood. There is no Fox Creek North. There's no Fox Creek South. It's Fox Creek. So I'm pleading for you to please reevaluate that. I just, I don't think it's right at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Wente, W-E-N-T-E. And again, as Mr. Scott and Mrs. Monsour, I also received the letter. Again, we, I have two children, a second grader and a kindergartner. Second grader started out at Chatham Elementary, grade school, fine. I have no problem that we would be moving back to Chatham Elementary. He was kind of excited. Oh, you know, he's excited to spend there. He knows where everything is. The kindergartner, on the other hand, when she found out, cried for 45 minutes. I don't want to go to a different school. My friends are all at this school. Change is going to happen. She'll get over it. We're not moving. She can make new friends. The thing is, again, Fox Creek, there is no north. There is no south. I don't know who comes up with that or who makes that deviation. I have always been told I, we live in Fox Creek. Okay, if you live north of this street, it's north. If you live south of this street, it's south. When the letter is addressed, "Dear Fox Creek North families," it's not not Fox Creek North that is moving. It is part of Fox Creek. Garvey, Garvey, from my understanding, is the dividing line. If you live south of Garvey, you're going to Chatham Elementary. If you live north of Garvey, you're going to Glenwood Elementary. I understand that North Point is a separate subdivision. That's fine. Send them to Glenwood Elementary. But Fox Creek, don't divide it into north and south. Don't, it's, it's one place. Don't draw that line. I think we've done this before. We're not going to divide subdivisions. You're going to go as a group. Fine, then take all of us. And when you take all of us, take us and leave us. When it says here that thanks to the bond referendum, November, building additions and improvements, it will be resolved once the additions are complete in 2014. What does that mean after that? Are we going to be moved again because there's going to be room at Glenwood Elementary again? I don't want to sit, my child, my second grader, has already been at two schools. He's going to go back to the other one again. Put us someplace and leave us there. I, that is, that's fine. Put us there and leave us. Stop moving us from Chatham to Glenwood to Chatham to Glenwood, just based on the size. I understand that there's overcrowding. There's always been overcrowding. Just make up your mind. Pick someplace and leave it. I understand that they're kids and they can adjust, but you know what? After a certain point, the kids start to lose trust in the school and the teachers and who they know. One year, their, their principal is Mrs. Seppich. The next year, their principal is Mrs. Coon. Then it's, who is it after that? I understand those people move and change, but leave their building the same. They just, they're only little for so long, and they make certain little childhood friends for so long, and after that, it's, I, just pick up a spot and leave us there. That's, I guess, what my ultimate, what my ultimate statement is. It's just, I don't want to have to, to wait every March or April for a letter saying, "What school are we going to this year? Are we going to Glenwood? Or maybe this year, we'll get the luck of the draw and we'll go to Ball." I mean, just pick a spot and leave us there, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. Does the count against our time?
Well, this isn't a question and answer period. This is a board meeting that we're having. If you've got something, you can call the district office and talk to the district office.
I just want to know if they're moving apartment mark.
I, I couldn't tell you. I don't think we've.
Jill's going to present.
We'll have a short presentation, but nothing has been cast in concrete. We're not voting tonight on, on any changes.
But you have people who sign a one-year lease, who are, apartments by their very nature are in and out. Why are you moving the people who are the homeowners, who are investing in the community? Why do you not move the ones who, by the very nature of the?
I can't tell you that. I can't tell you that. We're going to have a presentation.
Nobody's told you anything, and nobody's bothered to tell you anything.
Well, we appreciate your input tonight. We'll take it under consideration, and, and we'll have a presentation this evening, and it will be at a future board meeting. It'll be up for a vote, so. Anyone else want to address the board tonight? Okay, thank you. Moving along to our personnel consent agenda items, we have 6-1 through 6-17. Is there any board member who would like to pull one out for individual consideration? If not, then I need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda items as presented tonight, 6-1 through 6-17.
I'd like that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. In a second, please.
One second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Betsy, call the roll, please.
Cop.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Jesus.
Yes. Next, we have our personnel action items. The first one tonight, Betsy, if you can pull that up. Do we have it in here? Or is it?
She's got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, this is, we referred to this at the last regular board meeting in February, and at that time, it was just a concept that was being discussed and was actually brought to us from the BCA as something to consider. It's what we're calling a post-retirement incentive bonus, and for certified staff that are age-eligible to retire, that are, that are eligible to retire with no ERO penalty or a very small ERO penalty, which we're costing, which we're calling under $10,000. There are some employees, there are eight employees this year, that are eligible, that are in that category. And what we've talked about doing is to try to reduce our RIF list, our honorable dismissal list, of staff members that we are, we are reducing, actually, this evening. We had, had started talking about a retirement incentive, and one that, our stipulation was that it needed to be one that either allowed the district to break even or allowed the district to save some money. And what you see before you tonight is an MOU, which our collective bargaining agreement doesn't, it doesn't include this type of an incentive, so it has to happen in an MOU. And so we've drafted that in cooperation with the BCA leadership, and, you know, we as a district office wanted to thank them as well for all of their, their support in crafting this language with us. And what it does is it assigns, it's, there's a formula, and the calculation is written out, so that the formula includes an amount per, per credit, or, I'm sorry, per year of service to the Ball-Chatham School District. And so we feel like that's a really fair way to give the incentive, to define the incentive. At first, we had talked about a credit of approximately $350 per year of service in the district, and we didn't really have a lot of interest. We were just informally gauging how much interest we might have in that. And so we looked at it again, because with that, if all eight of those people had left the district, there would be another $100,000 savings this year, or this next year alone. We knew that, obviously, then in future years, you also have a savings. But, so we decided to, let's, let's go a little bit higher with that amount, so that the district is closer to breaking even on these folks, and then, and then allows us, like I said, it allows us for future years to save even more money, as well as take people off the RIF list. So we, we richened the deal, if you might, might call it, but we are still breaking even. If all eight of those people take this incentive, we still would save approximately $40,000 as a district. And that is because when you look at the person who is retiring versus the person on the RIF list that we could place right back in the classroom, those, the difference in their salaries is pretty discrepant based on the salary schedule. And so what we did was we increased that to a $650,000, I'm sorry, $650 incentive per year of service credit. And again, like I said, the district still breaks even, actually saves some money for next year, as well as the future years. We know that the, the savings increases over time. So what we're asking you to do tonight is simply to make this official, make this offer official in an MOU to the BCA. Then what would happen is we, we would determine how many people were interested in the incentive and taking the incentive. So out of those eight people, how many would say that, yes, I want to take this retirement incentive and put in their retirement letter for the end of this current school year? So they would be retiring at the end of the 12, 13 year, rather than retiring, you know, several years out. So it's really a win-win for the, for the district, as well as the association, as well as these individual employees that are currently on our RIF list that will be presented tonight. So before they could take, tell us that they wanted to take the retirement incentive, it has to be defined. We can't individually bargain with those, those eight employees. And so rather than that, we had to look at it as an entire, an incentive that would be eligible, that, that anyone who is eligible could take. So you're looking at it in terms of, an incentive that could, that anyone who has these parameters could take if they wish. We just happen to know there are approximately eight right now.
Why is the expiration date so late?
That's a good question. We talked about, at one time, we talked about making the, making the, you know, having a very short turnaround on this, so that we could pull people off our, our RIF list. However, we know also that those eight employees have some pretty big decisions to make. Some of them had not intended to retire for another four years or so. And we've heard from, you know, several people that, you know, when you come to that point in your career, you know, yes, it's enticing to think, consider retirement and all the things that you could do in retirement, but it's also very difficult for many of our teachers to consider retirement, because many of them love it so much that it's hard for them to make that decision. So they're weighing lots of options. They also need to, after we make this official, we know that our retirees will want to go see TRS, talk to TRS about what, you know, what the, the future actuarial formula looks like for them, as well as, you know, weigh this with potentially financial advisors or their spouses. And we know that those decisions may take quite some time to make. We looked at June 14th, that, you know, first, we had kind of thrown around some ideas about, would we let this expire in, in July? The hard part about that is we really want to give our administrators enough time to replace and pull off the retire, the RIF list, if there is someone on the RIF list that's, that's certified for this position, which we know there are people that we could pull straight from the RIF list. So it was kind of a, we really, you know, wanted to give them enough time to make this, this important decision, as well as give the district enough time to then, you know, recall whoever it might be that's certified on our RIF list, or to, if, if someone isn't certified on that RIF list, to go ahead and, and hire a new employee. So that was, that was our goal, and it, like I said, it's really a win-win for both the district, as well as the association.
Has the association indicated they would sign this agreement?
Mm-hmm. They helped us draft it, yeah. It was actually their, their idea. It was an idea that was thrown out as a kind of, let's think outside the box, and, and we worked pretty hard with Michelle, and, and I worked with the BCA leadership to talk about what that might look like, because it was thrown out as a, have you considered giving an incentive to those who are eligible to retire without an ERO penalty? And that's when we started having these conversations and came to this. So the BCA actually helped us draft it.
I have two questions. The first may be easy to understand, but difficult to answer. Have you got a good estimate of how many would lose eight positions? How many might take up the offer?
It's hard to say. There have been several who have met with Michelle, not all of them. Almost all of them, short of a couple.
About half have met with.
About half have come to Michelle, just to look at the numbers and look at what it means for them, because we have a spreadsheet. Clearly, when we, when we designed it, we looked at what, how much would be given to each person to determine what the district would have to pay out, and whether or not we would break even or save some money even. And so we know the specifics for those eight employees, and, and we asked that they at least sit down with Michelle and have that conversation about what their numbers look like, and we've had about half of them come talk to Michelle, so they're at least interested enough to know what the numbers look like. You know, beyond that, I don't know. Some may be waiting just to see that the MOU is official, and then they can really make, you know, have conversations with TRS and, you know, their families or financial advisors to determine what the future implications might be. So hard to say at this point.
Okay. The second question's, I think, a little harder for me to maybe explain it, but hopefully easy to answer. You said that the cost savings in this program would be roughly neutral for 2013, '14, but, but you're just referring to the savings in exchange of teacher salaries.
Correct.
You're not referring to the, the RIF position, the positions that have been cut at the high school. We still have those savings.
Yes, exactly. So when you look at, exactly, no, I'm with you. So when you look at the, the changes that were made at the last board meeting, that was a $1.35 million savings, and that is what I'm referring to, is having high school teachers teach six sections as opposed to five sections, and middle school teachers teach seven as opposed to six. And when we did that, that was a $1.35 million savings. And what you see tonight are, we, we have resignations, which we accounted for in that $1.35 million, as well as retirements, and, and then these positions that we're riffing. So the 10.5 positions that are being riffed tonight aren't the $1.35 millions in savings. It's also the retirements. And what we know specifically from when we place a RIF list, and we know who we're riffing, as well as who's retiring, we can look at this, how much that individual is making on the salary schedule. So that's a $1.35 million savings that we, we, you voted on last board meeting. Now, this, then, is an additional, if all eight of those employees do decide to take this, this offer, then we would just pull off the people from the RIF list and place them in positions, and, and then there is still an additional $40,000 in savings. And because we were trying to, like I said, break even as much as possible, but not cost the district something, and so there's an additional $40,000 in savings based on the retirees' salaries for next year compared to the incoming folks from the RIF list. So it's a win-win, because we can pull people off our RIF list, as well as save another $40,000. But then future years, it's obviously even more so, because their salaries compared to the person that's lower on the salary schedule. Does that help?
So in other words, the $40,000, the only, there's $40,000 savings, because there's additional costs to pay the benefit to the retiring teacher of the 850 a year for years of service, plus if there's an ERO.
650, yeah.
650, sorry.
That's okay.
And then, then even just the very next year, there'd be a significantly higher because of the difference between a, a younger, or a?
Correct. Because it's a one-year incentive. We don't pay it every year. It's a one-time bonus.
But that's all, all above the?
The 1.7 million.
Yeah.
Correct.
That we've already saved by eliminating positions.
Correct. Yes. I'm glad you pointed that out. I do, good enough job.
Yeah, ultimately, the higher priority is you've got some younger teachers that are good teachers.
Absolutely.
And we would like to try to keep.
Absolutely. And that was one of the BCA's big, you know, incentive, or reasons to come to the table with this kind of a, an idea, too, is that, you know, they know that then there are members that, whose positions we can save, because they, they will slide from the RIF list onto, you know, those openings, so.
Along those lines, though, are the people who are retiring, are those positions going to be able to be filled by the people on the RIF list?
Yes. With that, though, there is some shifting, some shuffling, and what happens is, let's say that, it doesn't always work so that the 10.5 positions or the 11 people on this RIF list are certified for these positions of the retirees. But what happens is, when we look at it, there is potentially, when the retiree list, you look at that and you think, we know that there are some people that teach, let's say, a fourth grade position, that might be interested in this position, because they've expressed an interest, and then you can slide that person into that position. So there is some shuffling that happens.
So it's not a one-to-one?
It's not a one-to-one. There are a couple of positions that are one-to-one, where this, you know, this is the position, this is the person that would slide right into that position. There are, there are several that are that way, but then there are some that it would mean a little bit more shuffling, which is what we have to do when we riff anyway. I mean, we always look at that, and, and we potentially have to shuffle, let's say, someone from the high school is certified to teach, you know, we might slide them into the middle school, so that a middle school person can slide on down to the G.I. You know, that happens naturally with riffs every year anyway, that you would have a riff. You would look at who's certified to teach what, and it does mean that sometimes there are involuntary transfers that happen with that.
Okay. Go ahead, Rick.
When this offer expires, the program, the payment expires as well, so if it were to be brought back in the future, it would be negotiated over again and started from zero?
Correct.
What's the likelihood of the best teachers on that RIF list moving on before, by June 14th? I guess that's my concern with that late of a date.
Right. And that was, I mean, it's hard to say. You know, it is, that would be a concern that we have people, because we have people on our RIF list that are good teachers, that we want to keep. And that's why we're fighting so hard to do something like this. And so, you know, it's difficult because you know that that's a risk you take when you riff, is that it's likely that even if we have, you know, let's say we have 10 more retirements or 10 more, 10 people that, eight people that take us up on this, or we have several resignations mid-year because someone's husband has transferred or something like that, that is always a risk that you take, you know, when you riff because you don't know how quickly they'll get another job. Part of the reason that we kind of tried to bump it up a little bit from earlier conversations where July, you know, could we wait that long? We tried to bump it up to mid-June thinking that we could, you know, get some of our RIF list people back secured in positions and, you know, it allows the district to, let's say that they do go out and find other jobs, then we can go search for another candidate. But it is a risk that we take. But it's one that we have to do because financially we have to riff now. And then, you know, by code, we have a certain number of days. So we have to riff now, knowing that we're hoping to be able to pull people back into the system that we've trained and we know are doing a great job.
Any other questions? All right. And if there are no other questions, need a motion then to approve this memorandum of understanding on post-retirement instead of bonus as presented this evening?
Well, as someone who has retired from our district, I would like to make that motion.
Thank you, Linda. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, John. And Betsy, call the roll, please.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Great questions, everybody. It's something that, I know Michelle and Carrie have worked long and hard on over the last, well, not long, but hard on. It's only been about three weeks, I guess, since we.
Met with them.
Met with them, so. All right. Next on our personnel action items, we have, we have a resolution here. Can you pull up that resolution for me? Because I will not be reading all these resolutions tonight.
Do you have the recorder?
No, no. It's good enough just to have them here. But anyway, this is a, this resolution is a, recommends the, let's see here, let me go back. This is a staff member being recommended for non-renewal of services. Claire Monroe. Are there any questions or comments? If not, need a motion then to approve the certified staff below for non-renewal of services?
I'll move.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And Betsy, call the roll, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Next we have is honorable dismissal of certified personnel, reduction in force. If you could pull up that. There we go.
Do you want me to pull the resignation?
Yes, please. Yes. Thank you. And let's see here. I know you've all had an opportunity to look these over in your board packet. Are there any questions or comments on these?
I never figured I'd be sitting up here having to do this.
I know.
For the years that we've been in this district.
If not, then I need a motion to approve this resolution for the honorable dismissal of certified personnel at the end of the 2012-2013 school year as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Yes. Next one is a resolution from part-time to, let's see, this is from, can you pull up that other one, please? Betsy. And this is from a part-time position 66% to a 50% part-time for the 13-14 school year. Need a motion then to approve that resolution as presented this evening?
Since I don't know Ryan, since he was about four years old, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Yes. Next item we have is honorable dismissal of certified personnel, reduction in force. If you could pull up that. There we go.
Do you want me to pull the resignation?
Yes, please. Yes. Thank you. And let's see here. I know you've all had an opportunity to look these over in your board packet. Are there any questions or comments on these?
I never figured I'd be sitting up here having to do this.
I know.
For the years that we've been in this district.
If not, then I need a motion to approve this resolution for the honorable dismissal of certified personnel at the end of the 2012-2013 school year as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
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 Thank you. Steve, call the roll, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Nusis?
Yes. Next, we have the honorable release of GMS and GHS staff members in extracurricular positions. And that's, or I mean, Carrie, you might want to, this is something there, we've determined that some of these are not coming back, is that correct?
Correct. These are all actually positions that are, that are not being replaced. These were part of the budget reduction plan. Again, remember that we looked at enrollment in the, in the various clubs as well as other offerings that are potentially similar to what, what you see listed here, clubs that are similar to. And as well as at the high school level, we looked, and middle school, we looked at what, which of them are competitive? That was, that was weighted when we decided which ones to, to reduce. And so the ones that you see in front of you are reductions based on the budget reduction plan.
Any questions?
That we presented last month.
I then need a motion to approve the honorable release of the GMS, GHS staff members in extracurricular, extracurricular positions as presented this evening in your board packet.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Linda. In a second, please.
One second.
Thank you, John. Call the roll, please.
Yes. Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Nusis?
Yes. Next, we have the honorable release of GHS and GMS academic team leaders. And these are, this is another elimination due to budget constraints for next year. These will not be rehired next year. Any questions? And if not, I need a motion then to honorably, honorably release these GHS, GMS team members as presented in your board packet tonight. And this is due to budgetary constraints for the 2013-14 school year.
Still move?
Thank you, Alan. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Nusis?
Yes. Next, we have the honorable release of GHS and GMS academic team leaders. And these are, this is another elimination due to budget constraints for next year. These will not be rehired next year. Any questions? And if not, I need a motion then to honorably, honorably release these GHS, GMS team members as presented in your board packet tonight. And this is due to budgetary constraints for the 2013-14 school year.
Still move?
Thank you, Alan. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Nusis?
Yes. Seven dot eleven. Again, this is certified and ESP positions that are being cut back in days due to our budget constraints for next year also. If you want to make a comment at all.
What you'll see is the number of days listed that they have currently and then the number of days that is, that is being recommended for the reduction. These are, there are several of our employees that have extended day contracts and those are, you can see the number of days that we're recommending that they be reduced by. One of the things that some of our, in our certified contract, our BCEA contract, collective bargaining agreement, they have, there is a clause in that contract that allows us with extended day, those with extended days, we have some flexibility in terms of allowing flex days so that, for example, the counselors are, you know, probably one of their busiest times is the beginning of school when they're setting schedules and helping students find their course courses as well as the end of the year when they're helping with processing grades and final transcripts. Because of that, we, they have extended days, obviously, but, but with a reduction, then it's not that we won't have those things. It's not that they won't be available to help set schedules in the summer, but more likely that they, they do have those, some of those days built into the extra days as well as, we have some flexibility with the principals to, let's say that there's a school improvement day that doesn't involve the counselors and they could potentially not be at school that day and we could flex out their days so that they're available during the summer. So there's some flexibility there and we really rely on our building leaders to work with them according to what the best, what's in the best interest of the district for them to be present. And so it's really one that we can be flexible based on the, the collective bargaining agreement. And because it's in the collective bargaining agreement, it's not individually bargaining with them and it's perfectly allowable to let that happen. So that's a little bit of the flexibility that we have with these folks because they are on extended day contracts.
Any questions? Need a motion then to approve the reduction in days for certified and ESP personnel as presented in your board packet this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Linda. In a second, please.
One second.
Thank you. Steve, and call the roll, please.
White?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
And Nusis?
Yes. Next, seven dot one two is the honorable release of our 2012-2013 mentors as presented this evening, as you can see up here. And this is something we do every year because we don't know the mentor requirements for the coming year. So we release them every year and then hire as needed next fall.
Correct.
Any questions? Need a motion then to approve the honorable release of our 2012-2013 mentors as presented?
I'll move.
Thank you, John. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. And call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Nusis?
Yes. And then seven dot one three, this is a resolution to eliminate the district-wide energy education stipend for the coming school year. Any questions on that?
That was one that was included on the budget reduction plan too.
Yes, it was, yes.
And this is one that, the stipend is offered for, it's a $15,000 stipend and we've talked to our facilities and grounds director, Dave Murphy, and his staff can get the, the technology that they have available and the data that they crunch, they're, they're going to absorb some of those, and the analysis of the data that was covered with this stipend in the past.
No questions? And need a motion then to, to approve the elimination of the district-wide energy stipend as presented in your board packet tonight?
I'm making a motion.
Yes, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'll move.
Oh, didn't I have a motion? I'm sorry. I didn't, did I?
No.
Okay, move?
Move.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. And then seven dot one three, this is a resolution to eliminate the district-wide energy education stipend for the coming school year. Any questions on that?
That was one that was included on the budget reduction plan too.
Yes, it was, yes.
And this is one that, the stipend is offered for, it's a $15,000 stipend and we've talked to our facilities and grounds director, Dave Murphy, and his staff can get the, the technology that they have available and the data that they crunch, they're, they're going to absorb some of those, and the analysis of the data that was covered with this stipend in the past.
No questions? And need a motion then to, to approve the elimination of the district-wide energy stipend as presented in your board packet tonight?
I'm making a motion.
Yes, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'll move.
Oh, didn't I have a motion? I'm sorry. I didn't, did I?
No.
Okay, move?
Move.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. And then seven dot one three, this is a resolution to eliminate the district-wide energy education stipend for the coming school year. Any questions on that?
That was one that was included on the budget reduction plan too.
Yes, it was, yes.
And this is one that, the stipend is offered for, it's a $15,000 stipend and we've talked to our facilities and grounds director, Dave Murphy, and his staff can get the, the technology that they have available and the data that they crunch, they're, they're going to absorb some of those, and the analysis of the data that was covered with this stipend in the past.
No questions? And need a motion then to, to approve the elimination of the district-wide energy stipend as presented in your board packet tonight?
I'm making a motion.
Yes, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'll move.
Oh, didn't I have a motion? I'm sorry. I didn't, did I?
No.
Okay, move?
Move.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quater?
Yeah.
Nusis?
Yes. Okay. That ends our personnel action items. And again, as Lisa said earlier, this is the first time we've really ever had to do this in my almost 20 years as doing this kind of, in the school board business and it's for Ball-Chatham and it's not a, something we wanted to do this year, it's something we had to do to maintain what we've got, so. Next, we have communications roundtable. Is there any, do you have anything you want to talk to? I had a couple of things, I just, as reminders. First of all, all board members should have gotten a email from the IASB to participate in a survey, online survey. If you could, if you find the time to, it's not very long, it doesn't take that much time, but it should be online, you should have got an email on that from, from the IASB. The second thing is that you got from, I think it's Joe Alio's office, the statement of economic, economic interests. And it's an online statement now. It's not the big yellow form that we always used to get in the mail. So you can do that online, you can send it back to them online and I think we can even, I did, Patrick said he got it, I forwarded, just forwarded him a copy of mine online so you don't have to print it out if you don't want to and present it to him.
Your response letter?
Did they email you back?
Yes. Yeah, it's an email that you got from them, it's pretty easy.
It's a forward.
Yes, and that takes, yes. So those are the two things I had, I don't think I had anything else.
Tomorrow at 1 o'clock, I'll be, I haven't heard back from Zach. Zach Masters-Smith with the Elementary Association of School Boards and I, the other day, last week, met with Senator Bertino, Bertino Torant, who's the sponsor of Senate Bill 2321, the show choir, permanent waiver from PE bill. We met with her. She is a former superintendent, regional superintendent of schools, a former administrator, so she certainly understood where we were coming from on both sides of the, she said she could see both sides of the argument. And we met with her and spoke with her and she has asked for us to possibly amend our language, which will be interesting. I think she'd like to broaden it maybe a little bit. But we testify tomorrow at the education committee at 1 o'clock, so we should look.
Very good.
So we'll see.
They actually have their invitational this weekend, the show choir does, our first ever that we're hosting.
Oh, here, yes.
So it's a great time for everyone to see what, you know, what it looks like and it's pretty exciting.
You know what? I didn't ask.
Invite her?
No, well, no, she's not, she's, I didn't, I forgot to, I need brain tomorrow.
Invite her to testify?
Okay. Anything else any of the other board members have on, for the good of the whole?
As most people know, we've been working on a goal-setting connection between our strategic framework and our, trying to connect it with the performance evaluation for both our district and our superintendent, kind of moving in the future, working with Larry Dirks from the IASB. Do we have an update on our timetable?
Well, we had, Larry sent, sent out an email the other day and his, he had, they were broken into, his place up in Petersburg, his house was broken into while they were, overnight while they were there.
Did they steal our goal?
They enhanced it or something.
Other districts want to use it.
Yeah. So Larry's running a little bit behind on that and he sent an email and apologized for that and I was going to forward it out and I, I just hadn't yet, so. But yeah, we should know in the next, I would think in the next week or so what's going on, but it, Larry is a bit upset by the, by the whole thing, so I can understand that, but, so, but he's still working on it.
When was that survey from ISB sent out?
From?
Just recently?
IASB.
Seems like it was last week.
Yeah, in the last week, yeah. I can forward it to you. Well, no, I can't because it's specific to each board member, I think.
I'll look to see if I can.
We can find out if they can resend it or something.
If you don't get it, let me know and I'll talk to Larry about it. Okay. Anything else?
Well, this is not appropriate as a discussion topic, but I mean, we've been dealing with the busing and the boundaries, we dealt with that last meeting and it will come up again. I just, I know the superintendent would assure everybody that some of the, some of the things discussed tonight will get addressed and try to.
Yeah. No, I'm glad you said that, John. We actually have it on our next topic as soon as you're prepared to move.
Anything else on, on our roundtable? If not, Carrie, it's yours.
Okay. And that's exactly the truth. We, we had been, we've actually talked about this topic starting in January, you talked about it a little bit in our transportation meeting. At that time, it was just conceptual, that the fact that, that the area that is defined as the, the boundaries of Glenwood Elementary has grown more rapidly than we even had projected. And we've talked about that for a couple of years now, that, you know, that is a growth area that has grown more rapidly than we had expected. Since that time, we have even learned of another neighborhood that is coming potentially on Iron Bridge Road area as well as there's a, and that's a pretty big subdivision.
120 houses.
About 120 houses. And then there is one off of Toronto Road that is, that is quite a bit smaller, that would be at Ball Elementary's boundaries. But we, we hear about new subdivisions quite often and we also see lots of development as you do in, in lots of areas in the district. And it's one, you know, it's, it's a good thing for our community and we're, we're happy for that. However, it means that there are, there are changes that have to be made. And when we looked at it originally, and I'll let Mrs. Larson talk about it, but when we looked at it originally, we did the same, we followed the same process that we did for when we drew the boundary lines to begin with. And we looked at enrollment, current enrollment, and we have a TransFinder, I'm stealing all your thunder. We, we looked at TransFinder that has the ability to show us exactly where students live as well as what, it plots them out on a map as well as what age groups those students are. And they, we've looked at that as well as lots of information from Jim Lovelace gets very involved in this as well because he looks at transportation routes and where the buses are headed. And so lots of conversations in January about the idea, the concept, throwing out different what-ifs, if this subdivision went here, if this one went here. Then in February, we talked more about, and we presented at the board meeting, we talked more about specific subdivisions that were just thrown out as concepts. And the, the problem with what we came up with at that point was, we had looked at, the solution at that time had been more about moving one neighborhood into another school to make room for another to go into that school. So we had shifting happening. And we really wanted to revisit that because that was moving more families even than we had anticipated as well as, you know, it was affecting more students as well as, you know, we were trying to look at transportation. So these have been ongoing conversations and we've tried to be very, we know that it's upsetting for families to hear that it's a potential, but we're trying to be very transparent in our conversations in public and that's why you're hearing them here before decisions are made. You heard in January as well as in February, you know, we're just really trying to make sure that it's, that our decisions are made in public so that we're not coming to, to you and asking for a vote the night that we, we expose something. So the letters were sent out to families that we thought would be potentially impacted by a future decision so that families can do exactly what you saw tonight, which is to talk about the impact and as well as give you their point of view. And so that was why we sent the letter on Friday because we knew that this would be in front of you tonight as information only. We're not making any, we're not asking for any votes tonight. We do want to make somewhat, you know, swift decisions on this process. We don't want to delay it too much because we want families to have time to transition. However, we want to also make sure that we have plenty of time for families to kind of, you know, weigh in on what the impact is as well as for us to make decisions. I don't know that there is a place that we could move the boundary line or adjust the boundary line that would be, that would be easy because it's a change for all families. And so we know that that's, that's going to be something that we have to, we have to take into account, but we want to make sure that it's, that it's in front of you as well as in front of the families and that was why we sent the letter. So no decisions have been made. And, and tonight, we're not even asking for a recommendation, we're just simply having some conversation. So Jill?
Well, I want to tell you that this is a difficult time and for some of you, you've heard this several times, but you need to understand that I, as a parent, went through this when we moved from Ball to GES and I had a fourth grade. So I personally found out in May that my child was being transferred her fourth grade year. Every day of my life during that school year, she told me about it. Some of you know her and laugh, but it was true. She made sure I was well aware that she was very unhappy with her friends. So I mean, that's why I think the decision needs to be made in March versus a May or June decision because families need some time to put some things in order. So this is not an easy decision. What we have got it down to is it would affect 56 current families versus 149 that I said last board meeting. It would have, if you add the seven kindergartners that have pre-registered, it's a total of 63 students that would be affected by this. Part of it is when you look at the boundaries on TransFinder, when you get close to Eagle Ridge and Fox Manor and Quail Meadows, all of those go to CES right now. So that was part of the decision as well. We did want to be very transparent and alert the parents to this being a possibility and that we've reduced the number of changes. Instead of having changes affect every single elementary, we can confine it to just GES and Chatham Elementary and have enough space at those buildings. The issue is when you look at the growth of the district on TransFinder and you look at all the boundaries and where everything, the most growth you're going to see is going to be in the GES boundaries. There's 104 subdivision, 104 plots in the subdivision off of Iron Bridge that are going to currently grow. It's the stout land, for those that know that. So we've got to take that into consideration. Can we stay as-is? Absolutely not. Not with the growth, growth at GES is undergone this year. We've already got people who are not going to their home school now every time they register. So we can't suck it up. You have no more room at GES, even for the nine months while that building is under construction. So this is a very difficult decision and it's not taken lightly. Then we also do have some growth at Ball Elementary. They will hit Ball Elementary on Toronto Road, it's called Toronto Terrace, and that's 18 to 20 houses in a subdivision off of North Codpend Road. So when you look at it, we can do some shifting of teachers. We would have to add two additional elementary teachers and then we will have to keep continuing to look at the fourth grade numbers. But it affects, if you want to break down, seven kindergartners, 17 first graders, 14 second graders, 10 third graders and 15 fourth graders. I've been asked lots of questions today via email and phone. Some of the things that I have continued to talk to parents about is that we would do visits and tours, we would have the counselors meet the families, we'd do a body system
schools equally, because of Title I dollars, and the impact that it has on those programs, because of how our federal funds flow through for our free and reduced students. So, when we look at that TransFinder program, and we look at where our students are, we also can see which ones are, which, which of our students, based on our demographic information, are free and reduced, as well as age levels. And it's, it's definitely one that we have to try all sorts of different scenarios, and we've tried to do it very publicly, so that people understand what we're looking at, as we're looking at it, all along the way.
Jill, you said that you have also had to tell some people who have moved into the district once the school year has started, that they have to go to a school outside their boundaries.
Absolutely, and that's what they're doing.
How many have you had?
We're, I think we're up to 10 right now, that are already having to do that.
Okay. And those students next year?
Will go to their home school.
Will go to their home school.
Because that's what you're talking about, you move in and your next-door neighbors go to the next school, and you move in and you have your dogs go to the next.
Well, and it creates a transportation issue.
Transportation issue, too.
The problem is, if I had somebody right now move in at the lake in 3rd grade, I don't know, I mean, we'd have to, we'd probably send a van. So we incur costs, because, you know, we wouldn't send a bus, but it's the only way we would be able to get that student to.
Because they couldn't go.
To GES or CES. And right now, GES doesn't have room for that 3rd grader, so they'd have to go to CES, all the way from out by the lake. So it gets to be very, very difficult.
You know, I was convinced at the time that we opened GES just in time. But the iron, and we probably did, but the irony is, once you open a school, it's an attract, you know, people like the idea of, and even as we refurbish the other schools, and you get just, you end up having more families move in, and more subdivisions getting put up, just kind of, the volume keeps coming.
Yeah, I mean, this is not, this is not easy. But our advantage is, we have three excellent elementary schools, with excellent administrators that, and, you know, we didn't, and I, you know, we, when we look back at transparency and what we did for kids, we really didn't have a very good transition for the kids that were going to the new elementary, and going to different. And we definitely are not going to do that this time. We will definitely have a transition plan for kids.
And I really appreciate that. Like Mr. Scott, having a kindergartner, who spent last semester in Australia, by the way, they do, they do, they do get better at separating. It's really, really important, because even, even as old as my kids are now, we've, this is, we've been switching, moving kids around from school to school for a long time, because we keep growing, and.
Well, and I know, our district has really worked on making sure that all three elementary schools, the curriculum is the same, the reading initiative program has made, helped make sure that the instruction is the same in each school, and that, that has been difficult to do, but it's been really important.
And we do, they're all high-performing, so.
Yes, and they're all high-performing, yes. And they all have the same goals.
And I'd add, they all feed into the same 5th grade now, so that everybody's.
That's what I kept telling my daughter all year, all the same.
5th grade, yeah.
Right. Well, and, you know, to Mrs. Seppich, and Mr. Viola, and Mrs. Coon, I mean, they collaborate all the time. If they make a decision in their building, they make sure that that decision is shared with the others. So, I mean, we very much try to keep them very level. We work very hard at that.
I think we made a mistake when we had started out talking about boundaries, by saying we weren't going to divide any subdivisions. I think that was a goal that we had.
It was.
At the time, but it didn't turn out to be a realistic goal for us to.
Well, I differ with you a little bit. I think it is a, it's a goal, it's probably not a realistic or attainable goal every year in all situations, which is the problem, which is not attainable, although it is a desirable thing.
Anything else, Jill? Jill, anything else? No?
No.
Anything else, board members? Okay. And we will revisit this next week, okay? At next Monday night's meeting. At 8:03, we've got some future board meetings coming up, and we have an election coming up on April 9th. Any comments, questions about that? Next week, we have a board meeting, March 18th, April 22nd, our April meeting. On to 8:04, it's the opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any topic. Anybody like to address the board?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was.
Can you come on up, up here?
I'm sorry, I'm loud, I'm just a.
Well, you got the microphone right there, and if we could have your name, and.
Sure, sorry I'm late.
That's okay.
My name is Rex Stewart, I live in what I think is now called Fox Creek North, I'm not really sure. I live over on New Haven Lane. I actually have the unfortunate problem of living next to Rob. I only say that because Rob and I worked together for six years, so I have to apologize to him. I'm late actually because I was actually running Cub Scouts across the street, so I had to finish that up and then get over here, but.
Oh, we've got five minutes.
Oh, boy. I guess, my concern as a parent is, you know, is I have three of the kids that are getting moved. I had to tell my kid, my student kindergarten tonight, that she's not going to school with her friends. Luckily, that temper tantrum ended after a couple minutes. But initially, we got the letter, we were told Fox Creek North. I'm thinking, okay, they're going out to Mansion Road, because that's Fox Creek. And then today, I heard something completely different. I heard it's actually being split right at Garvey, like the south half of the street is going to Chatham, and the north half of the street is going to Glenwood. And so, I'm just concerned about the letter we got, because to me, it just seems like we're saying, this, your subdivision's going, and then I find out today, well, it's not all of your subdivision, it's not what the letter said. You know, I mean, that's my concern. It's like, I don't seem to, no one seems to be able to tell us what's actually going on, and it's our kids. It's having to explain to my kids, yeah, I know, I know Kate was your buddy, and you guys have been together since, you know, you were in kindergarten, and now you're not going to be. I also have kids that have, my oldest student in school, you know, they have, one has an IEP, they have special needs, and they, they went, my son went to Chatham, and personally, we didn't have a grade today at Chatham. Went to Glenwood night and day. You know, my kids have gotten so used to seeing Mrs. Coon, Mrs. Ferris, and just knowing them, so comfortable with them. Transit, I have a kid with Asperger's, transitions are hard for him. I'm not looking forward to it, because he used to, every time he said, he had to do this a couple of years ago, he took a step back. I don't want to see him again.
Into consideration, Jill.
That's the concern. When we went to Chatham, I, I've never met Mrs. Seppich, in the two years we were there, I never met her, so I have no idea who she is, or what she looks like. If she's here tonight, let me know.
She is.
Hi. Just introduced myself, so that I know, because I just don't know, but I know the people at Glenwood, okay? And that was my concern. I just want transparency, I want to know who's moving, what's going on, and what we're going to do. I guess the big question is, we need to figure out about K-9. Where's my daughter going to go for K-9? Is she supposed to go to Glenwood, or is she going to be going to CES? Because I need to figure all that out. But, I mean, that's really, I just was hoping there'd be more answers, and find out what Fox Creek North actually is. Because it's not Fox Creek North that's going, it's a portion of Fox Creek North. It's a portion of that I'm calling, the other portion of Fox Creek North, or, I don't know. But, that's pretty much it, and Rob's probably shocked, I got to do five minutes, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Is there even an alternative plan, or is this the only one that's been floated? Because one plan is not really a choice.
This, we're developing a plan right now, so.
I apologize for my ignorance, but it appears that one's already been developed. What I'd like to know is if there was more than one developed.
We've looked at a number of different things, I know that Jill's looked at a number of different things. I was on the original committee that set up the original boundaries for it, based on the information we had at that time. So, and we spent months trying to figure things out, so. We've looked at it for quite a long time. It's, it's, it's something that is one of those facts of life that we end up having to deal with as a board, as a school district, and as parents, so.
So then there's just the one plan, then, is the answer to my question?
I think there have been other plans, but.
Workable plans, is what we're looking at, as something that.
Trying to look at different ones, to figure out which one is going to work.
The least amount of kids affected.
That will affect the least amount of kids. That doesn't help with your kids, I know.
Sorry, is there anybody else that wishes to address the board tonight?
Can I approach him, please?
Is there something different you want to talk about?
Yes, there is, absolutely. May I approach him, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I just would like to reinforce to everybody here that this is obviously a very serious decision. It's personal to Jill, I know, and I just want to say, the first time that we moved, my daughter moved as a 2nd grader to Glenwood Elementary, which I have nothing but good things to say, but with that being said, she was placed in a class with a brand-new 22-year-old teacher. She had to transition, which was very hard for her. She was, you know, at a normal weight, she lost seven pounds, she was scared, she was put in a classroom, I wrote letters, I did all the things that I was advised to do. She was placed in a classroom where she knew one person, with a brand-new teacher. That was very difficult for her. So I'm asking, when you're making this transition, that it is really taking into account the impact that it can have on our kids, because we're wonderful parents. I'm very involved in the school, and it's number one to me, and that's why we're all here. But I would like to see that taken into account with the children. I'm scared, my youngest, she is having trouble learning. The school's been wonderful, but it's so nerve-wracking, because she's at such a prime age. You know, she'll be eight years old, and to have to move her again, and my thought, my 4th grader would be so excited to go back to Chatham, she's not, she's crying, she doesn't want to. We got the letter, so I thought, okay, it must be official, I guess I'll tell her, not realizing that we still have to vote, I guess. That letter sounded pretty official to me. So I guess when we're making this transition, you know, parents want to help, maybe if we can make the incoming 4th graders feel useful, they can partner up with somebody in our neighborhood, and, and help maybe the child that's gone to kindergarten at Glenwood adjust to being a 1st grader at Chatham. Because no matter what, or no matter how hard we try to fight this, it has to happen. And if it's going to make our district better, we want to do all that we can to make it better, and to work with the district. But, it hurts my heart in a way that I realize some subdivisions are, what am I trying to say, divided, where they go to different schools. However, in Fox Creek, you're literally, the person right across the street from you will be at a different school. And common sense is just telling me that that's not right, that's not why we moved to Chatham, that's not why we moved into a neighborhood, so the person right across the street from me can be at a different school. Have different start and stop times, different pickup times. I really think that that is irresponsible. I think we need to be building communities, and we want neighbors to be neighbors. We want our kids to go to school together, and that's why we moved into a neighborhood in Chatham. So I just, I just want to impress that on everybody, and I really want, when we're making these decisions, want that to be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants? Yes, sir, come on up. She woke up, huh?
Partnering. She struggled with the time change.
Don't we all? If we could have your name, sir?
I'm Fred Oshleger, O-H-S-C-H-L-A-E-G-E-R. Just a few comments, as far as the boundary changes, I recommend if there is a plan, maybe put it out there. My wife said there was a letter in our mailbox today that we might be changing as well, in Matter Hill, with the Sturman, you know, I don't care your wife. We're on a boundary, which is fine, but just comment, there's some information out there, misinformation perhaps. A second one is on the retirement, early retirement of the teachers. Just from trying to do the math in my head, I get for the district that we might be even or better off, but I'm still not figuring out the math from a state point of view, that we still have to pay those teachers retirement pensions. I grew up in the Cloud Cities in Rock Island, just because they're off our liability for pay, somebody's still going to pay that pension, and it seems to me that the math doesn't quite add up. I mean, we've got a state that has four generations of police officers, teachers, in the same time as we let people retire too early. So I just throw that out of consideration. I was fortunate, within the last month, to have a meeting with some of the governor's staff for the company I work for, which is in agriculture. The first topic that the staff member led with was the downstate school districts passing off all the pension liabilities on the Chicago schools. I'm sure you've heard that, but I found it interesting, that was the first topic he led off with, and wanted to get his point across. So they've started down that path, I don't think they're going to give up. Last thing, I know there were several resignations here recently, want to call out, I think those were, you know, part of the RIF potential, or they kind of, some of them looked one in the same, so I want to recognize those teachers that resigned as well. I don't know, all of them had desire to, or wanted to. I get that it happened, but I want to, you know, recognize those. And last thing, I think, you know, the district's going through a lot of changes. We've talked about people changing schools. I think I counted on the way over, I think my daughter will have four different principals in four years, my son will be, I think, three for four. A lot of it is good reasons, but from a school district point of view, one of the observations my wife and I have made as we moved into this district, is that there is a desire to keep parents at arm's length, is what it feels like, relative to other districts we've been in. And I would encourage you over the next year, as leaders, I would encourage administrators, as you get a chance to engage with the parents, don't get caught up in the day-to-day, and, you know, sit behind a desk, the next six months is a time to get out in front of people, and engage with the parents, because they're going to need it with these changes, these cutbacks. They are having an impact. My son is in the classroom with 28 children, it is an issue, it is an impact, and we all need to work collectively together to, to work through that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification for Fred, that those teachers are not, there isn't a penalty, they're age-eligible to retire, so they're not the early-retirement option people, but, yeah, that's a good point, though.
I also find it interesting that the legislature, legislators as usual have short memories, and forget that there was a deal cut with Chicago. State used to pay Chicago pension payments as well, and they cut a deal with the city in exchange for different funding for Chicago. So I always find it very interesting that, you know, nobody seems to know, I'm not saying, and I don't know that it's in, it's just because of my day job, that, that I'm fairly well aware that the pension cost, that, you know, the pension cost shift is on the table.
Okay, thank you.